Details, details.
Hey, look at mine.
Alright.
Well done, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
We got it, never mind.
Never mind, never mind.
Mr. Holly.
Alright, welcome everybody, thanks for being here. Got a nice little crowd, clearly you guys have nothing better to do on a Tuesday night, so, but thanks for being here. Uh, Mr. Holly, roll call please.
Mr. Jarvis.
Present.
Dr. Lorenz.
Here.
Ms. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Portune.
Here.
Mrs. Washburn.
Here.
Alright, 606. Alright, need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move.
Pettit, second. Portune. Anything new in front?
So there was actually an addition on my part, um, yeah, sorry. I plugged in the microphone, so it's gonna remind you.
Yeah, okay, oh, I see how this is, okay.
The appropriations, so we just had to increase some appropriations, and I put it in my board report.
Also, there were a few late supplemental additions and substantive retirements that we just got highlighted in yellow in the human resources.
Alright, thanks. Mr. Holly, please.
Dr. Lorenz.
Yes.
Ms. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Portune.
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn.
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis.
Yes, alright, the agenda is approved. Again, welcome to everybody, we got a lot of good stuff going on tonight, so appreciate everybody being here. If you wouldn't mind, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alrighty, so, moving on, do we have any hearing in the public tonight?
Yes, we have Stephen McLennan.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you're in the hot seat?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to make sure the microphone's on for green.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
I'm here tonight as a representative of organization out of Citizens Climate Lobby. And I presented a resolution to you with your consideration. Citizens Climate Lobby is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, all-volunteer organization, and we are focused on one issue and one issue at home, which is climate change. CCL, as I will refer to it as, started about two years ago, and has grown very rapidly. Today, we are north of 100,000 citizen volunteers spread across the US. We have chapters in virtually every congressional district in every state. And what we do is we build a little tool to address the issue. And I've been part of every nation, the public here for years now. In Ohio, it has, for example, public non-chapters, including one in citizens' lives. We are science-focused, and to address climate change, you might think that the solution will come from science or technology. It turns out that the best solution for climate action comes from the climate. And it's simple to put a price on our innovation that we produce, and we can swing off of it. Right now, we're not coming to that at all, except for the climate. There is a sense of urgency around this, I don't know if you are aware, International Government Campaign on Climate Change, or ITC. This is a very, very well-established international panel of climate scientists called the Best in the World. They have been originating from the power for several years. The last couple of months, they have issued a little stark warning to the world that we have about 10 or 12 years to take very serious action, or we are going to be in a very difficult place. Changes that we have experienced so far have simply come from the act of. And if we don't do it properly, we are going to be paying for typically our children to be protected, which is near the bottom of the earth. Citizens Climate Lobby, for a long time, has proposed a policy solution to this, which is called carbon, fee, and dividend. And it's a very simple policy, it's to put a price on carbon, and it's actually an escalating price, it'll go up like the stairs, it'll go up in very big, it'll go up long in advance. Each year, it goes up a little bit, that fee is collected, it's put into trust, and then it's dividend back to the American public. It's not down into government coffers. It's dividend back on a equal share basis. And if you think about that fundament, what happens is, if you're a heavy-carbon consumer, the dividend that you give back will not cover the costs that you're going to experience from increasing price of carbon. You're going to be incentivized with alternatives. And that's what they set up, a free-market solution to that thing, such that entrepreneurs, innovators, will come in with better ideas than you are in the industry. So I'm here, going to the school board, because I'll tell you, I'm trying to build a little tool. So we draw our call on the representatives here in Ohio. And it's very, very helpful for us, you know, we have business leaders who say that this is a good idea, we should do it. It's been clergy, it's been local, state politicians supporting this. It's very, very useful to the school board, because of the speaks to children. And as much as we will experience the impact of this, children will come up, wanting their lives are going to be profoundly influenced if we do not provide them. So I prepared a resolution that's in front of you.
Oh, please, sorry about that.
Stephen, had you told me that there are other school districts that have made these resolutions, but I think maybe none so far in Ohio, is that?
None in Ohio, there are 29, I think, baby school boards around the country with signed various versions of the resolution in front of you. They're in Colorado, Florida, Virginia, and other states.
And then it also notes in the resolution that there's an effort to get NSBA, the National School Boards Association, to...
...a proposal with President Brennan to encourage school boards to put that.
And that that's being presented to them, or there's going to be a meeting or something in March, is that right? Okay, and what stage is that in?
I think it's in the residence, if you may ask me the name of that venue.
Okay, gotcha.
Stephen, is this resolution one that is, let's say, the same as others that are out there, or is this one that you've kind of crafted?
I have crafted it from others, and some school boards sort of do an appreciation, like the community support first two things, but they want all for the books or, I mean, it's clear enough to me that there are a lot of words that are in there, etc. So I could sort of put it outside, and obviously, the stronger you can make it, the more useful it is for members. And I should point out that Citizens Climate Lobby calls on maybe the Congress very literally, it's actually a group on the ground in Washington DC, at least twice a year. So we have long-term relationships with members of the Congress, and they're very beneficial.
Thank you. Anything else? Alright, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing it to us, Stephen.
Good to see you. Alright, any other hearing in the public? Thanks, alright, next we have a presentation, Science Olympiad. Dr. Kraus, did you want to make that introduction, or somebody else?
Absolutely, we have Kelly Partridge and Jen Chaster here tonight to talk about Science Olympiad. Besides the science and all of their achievements, you can also count on declaring a snow day on a Saturday. So anytime there is a Science Olympiad event on a Saturday, you can count on having a significant amount of snow. So, in addition to anything else that they do, they also can predict the weather.
It's becoming a joke, if you want a day off, let's just have an invitational.
And invite Kelly and Jen.
Alright, I'll start, and then Jen can go. Um, we are fortunate enough to have the high school students, and right now, we have about 29 to 30 students that are interested. Last year, we only had one team initially, we had enough students that we created two teams. Each team that competes in Science Olympiad, there's allowed to have 15 students on that team. Only seven of them may be seniors, so you have to have a balance with your underclassmen. Both of our teams competed in the Pickla Invitational, which we'll talk about, that's the one we just went to on Saturday, and the snow was pulled off.
There would have been one before that, but...
We got snowed out, so. Our regionals is going to be on March 9th, feel free to come and join us at Xavier University. That one is one where you qualify, if we do really well in that, then we can go to the state one. But the ones that we've done so far are just basically practice for the students. The state's tournament then takes the top six teams from regional, we did go last year, maximum of one per school. So even though we have two teams, we're gonna narrow it down to one for regionals, and then that team is the one, it's like the best of the best, we put them in the regionals, and they'll go on. And we'll tell you a little bit more about what Science Olympiad is anyway, and that's on April 27th at Ohio State. This is our team that went to Pickla, adorable students, they're all actually amazing. And then Jen's gonna break it down and tell you about the different categories that we actually compete in, like, in Science Olympiad.
So it's really neat, there are actually 23 different events that span every aspect of science. So life science, physical science, more of the STEM engineering type side, and just actually good communication and teamwork, which is so important. So these are all life science events, and every year, it rotates a little bit, so the kids are constantly learning something new. So for anatomy and physiology, this year, it was the cardiovascular lymphatic and extracurricular system. Last year, it was three different systems, so that they're constantly having to phone up and learn new things. All of the ones that you see up here are more just sit-down tests, so they sit down with their partner, they have 50 minutes to answer as many questions as they can, and go through the material and compete against the other teams. For earth and space science, this year, these were the four events, same thing, very much sit-down events with your partner and talking. Then we get into even more fun, I might be biased.
Well, fossils, though, they do have the different, like, there is some hands-on, there is a little bit of lab work in that one.
So then with physics, we get into some really cool stuff with Circuit Lab, where there's a written portion, but there's also a lab base. Where this time, I think they had to figure out how to get a breadboard and wire everything, so that they could get two light bulbs to light up. And then there was also a written test. For sounds and music, they actually have to build a musical instrument. So we made two, because since we had the two teams, one was a Blue Man Group PVC piping that you hit kind of with the back of a flip-flop shoe-looking thing, and it was awesome. And then we also made a xylophone for that one, and then again, there's a written test for that knowledge portion. And then for thermodynamics, they have to build a box that's capable of withstanding, or you put hot water in it, and it has to stay hot, basically. And it's really cool, because it also gets them into prediction, so they have to run a bunch of tests on their box beforehand, and when they come into the event, they say, okay, we're gonna give you this much water at 80 degrees Celsius. And you look on your charts and say, oh, I think it'll be 72 degrees Celsius after five minutes. And then they get a score for how close they were to that, and it's just, it really is amazing what these kids can do. With chemistry, again, they rotate topics every year, so this year, chem lab with physical properties and acids and bases. And they actually, again, are in lab doing the chemistry and the written portion. Forensics is becoming near and dear to our hearts, because for every invitational that we go to, the way they run the invitationals is the coaches have to run the event at the invitational.
And that's the only pit.
Yes, so we spent lots and lots of hours together coming up with the event, we have to bring all the materials for the actual lab portion of it, and write the tests, and then you grade all the tests when you're there. But it's exciting, and you kind of get to see the competition from a different vantage point.
To show you how far we go on this, they have to, one of the things they have to test is here, so I stopped, there was this dead squirrel in the room, and I cut his tail off.
No!
I have squirrel hair.
Oh my god!
And have, there is a limited amount of hair in squirrels, one of them, squirrel cowed back, we couldn't get that hair, but we did get cow, we got squirrel, you know, we did, we got horse, but I had to get roadkill to do it, so.
We are resourceful. Always good time. And then the protein modeling is actually really neat, because there's software that they have to learn to actually build the proteins, and then again, there's a written test for it. For the technology and engineering, these are a lot of the building events, so Boom-a-Lever is kind of like a tower, but it goes sideways. So it's a sideways tower that you suspend a weight from, and it has to be as light as possible and hold as much weight. Mission Possible is one of my personal favorites, because it's like a Roob Goldberg machine. So the kids have an action that they have to start, like this year, I think it's they have to pull a magnet away from something to start, and then that does this action, that does that action, that does this action. And the final action is they have to use a scissor lift to raise something that's above the height of the entire box. So really, really cool. Mast-tripe vehicle is a machine that just kind of goes forward and back, it's a car. And then Wright stuff is kind of our arch-nemesis right now, it's a plane that, play a baby here, um, yeah, we won't talk about that one anymore. Although I got a message today that says that we are gonna have a legitimate plane to read.
We actually took one that we got from Tuck and Truck, because it would fly, because that was the worst case scenario, so.
And then these are the kind of the cool other science events, so not specific to one particular science, but experimental design is three kids, and you go in and they give you a scenario. So they may give you some weights and some string, and just say, discover something about a pendulum. And so you have to run a small experiment and write a complete lab report in the 50 minutes about that. Codebusters is decoding encrypted messages, Fermi questions, really special, everything's an answer to a power of 10. So they have to estimate, like, how many golf balls would fill the earth, and just weird, odd stuff like that.
Or how many water molecules are in lychee, or, you know.
Crazy. And then write it, do it, they build something out of Legos or paper or whatever, and one person sits down and has to write about it, and then they give the materials and the description to the next person, and the next person has to build it. And you, again, you're working on those good communication skills. So it's something that we've been really excited about, because it's so science-based, but it's also giving these kids the skills they need to be successful in the future. And like, these are memories that I still remember, I mean, I went here, and I did this in middle school and high school, and still have the memories from it, so it's, it's really neat. This was Pickla, we won't read it all to you, but this was all the meddling that happened at Pickla, so the kids did...
In the top six.
In the top six.
So we had, yeah, so top six, these are the ones that we scored in, in our two teams.
And so the, I mean, the teams did just an outstanding job.
And there were 34 teams, I guess, participating, so 34, out of 34 teams. What's really cool about this, too, is that the kids take this on upon themselves, you know, a lot of it, they do on their home, they build at home, they, they come in for extra help, or they, they'll, because of physics, you know, we'll send them to a physics teacher, but they really take it on themselves. So it's, each student participates between three and five events given in a day. So they don't just go and do one, you only have 15 people on your team, and you have these 23 events. Most of them are participating, we, we get to five events in a given day.
And if you look at these kids, and I'm sure their kids, that you recognize the names, because they're involved in everything, and they're awesome.
Can I get a quick score on our A.T. sheet? She didn't.
Yep.
We like her, I do. She's a ringer.
She is, she is.
I see, I mean, I see cheerleaders, I see showfire kids, I see athletes, like, all, you know, this is what they do in addition to the other things that they're involved in. And it's hard, because, you know, you have conflicts with, our next conflict at Regional, they're all going to see Hamilton that day, so kind of, it's like, you know, there's, life gets in the way, so.
I'm going to APM after, I'm really young.
So, oh, it does a slide, it's a video. David?
Did I say there was a video?
Yeah, moral of the story is, we really, really appreciate your generosity, Mr. Portune. We were able to go to Home Depot and buy more PVC piping than I've ever seen in my life. And we walked in, and we're like, yeah, we can do this, and we can fit it in our truck, no big deal, and so we go over there, and we've got, you know, shopping carts full of things with lists from the kids of what they needed, and...
Big pieces of wood, we had no idea what we were doing, were we? But what was really nice, too, and just to plug to Home Depot, they also gave us, like, $50 off, because they knew what we were doing. So they said, we're gonna give you a discount, this is awesome, so, a home, you know, a present.
Absolutely, so we really appreciate it, because it's allowing us to give the kids more liberties to do the things that they really want to do. We were, when we were there, they saw a mousetrap vehicle, and one of our students is on the robotics, you know, actually quite a few of them are, he's like, I know where they got those parts, I recognize that, we can get those parts. And so now he's all excited to buy the better parts and be able to do that, so thank you very much, and we're just excited to see what the kids can do at Regional.
Awesome, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, how much, how much time do you two spend, of your time?
Well, it's typically four full Saturdays, the bus leaves usually around 6:00 AM, and we get there usually between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, so it's four full Saturdays. And then the preparation, I mean, just in us doing the forensics pieces has cost us, I've had time, at least two full weeks prior to the events, all of our preps, we spend doing that, and then we spend, we've got five hours on a weekend trying to do that. That's just us prepping for forensics. And then the help of the kids, and then we do this and all that after school, just a little bit more. But they're awesome, amazing kids, and it's science, you know, we're nerds, we're nerds, yeah.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ladies, I just wanted, you know, one of my favorite things about being on school board is I always get a real stark reminder that I'm dumber than a box of rocks. No offense to the rocks, of course, but is, when is the next, March 9th, and where is that?
Xavier.
Can you send me the details about that, and I'll share that with the board, thanks.
And for the building events, you can't watch the test, obviously, because they're sitting in a room, but for the building events, I mean, or if you're going to Roob Goldberg and a plane and all that stuff, I can go in and actually see that they finished, so.
That'd be fun, send us the schedule, and I'll share it with everyone.
Great, yeah, please say congratulations and thank you to all the students.
Absolutely, thank you, I will too.
One thing I did notice on the very first picture is it's the faces, you wonder how these kids have time to do all the stuff that they do. I mean, at least one or two of them's on robotics, and I know what kind of, kind of time commitment robotics is, so, uh, scary thought, but, you know, there might actually be two or three Sophia Murrs running around, so.
I mean, they're, I mean, they're literally kids who want to just do science for fun, like, it's, they're taking tests for fun, because they like science, that's, I mean...
Once again.
It's awesome.
It's great, thanks again. Alright, full day kindergarten.
Speaking of awesome, we have another great team here tonight.
Good evening, thanks for having us, if I'd have known we were following that, I would have stayed home. Super excited to see all the cool stuff our kids are doing, and it's really neat to see the pictures of it, because they're so much bigger and older than all we used to be. If I would have thought about it, I would have included a picture, just so we could kind of see the difference.
See the difference between five-year-olds and 17-year-olds.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but you didn't bring your baby?
Did bring the baby, baby hasn't been out of the house yet, but thank you for the well-wishes and all that, I guess.
Congratulations.
Five days old, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
First day of showers on Saturday.
Too much information, that's right.
It may be another week, so.
If we get together again, I will definitely...
There, you're nice.
Alrighty.
Just thank you so much for having us here tonight, we won't talk for very... We won't talk for very long, or I'll cry not to talk for very long, but this is something we're super excited about. We, uh, we get to meet with the Tiger Cubs every morning, our youngest kids, and we get to do our best to get them excited about their journey that is learning, and that is learning through muffling. Our goal is pretty simple. We want them to come to school, get super excited, and go home and come back every day. We want them to run in faster than they run out at the end of the day, and when they drive by our school, I want that kid to be like, "That's my school." And then we want that to continue. When they leave our building, we want that to keep happening, so that way, when they're in high school, they're doing all of the wonderful things that I am going to add in robotics and all the stuff that we're talking about. So this is just something we're really passionate about, really excited about, and we just wanted to share a little bit with you all, if you don't mind, and all of you that are here as well. So thank you.
Jesse, do you want to introduce your team real quick before you start? Just so people know who's here?
I would like to all introduce myself. But I am Jesse Coles, I am the principal, and we have a bunch of L E C C folks here today. Some of them are still kind of sitting in the background a little bit, but we will kind of go through quickly.
They're more com- they are more comfortable in front of five-year-olds than-
Yes. You are much bigger than our five-year-olds. Melanie, over here, go ahead and-
Hi, I'm Melanie Laurent, I'm the building coordinator at L E C C.
I'm Jamie Hydrick, I'm the school administrator at L E C C.
I'm Carrie Smith, the school that called us.
We have several teachers here.
Lisa.
I'm Lisa Smith, building coordinator of Carrie Smith.
I have a vision for the building.
Thank you so much for being here. So that is just part of our wonderful team, and they would have been fine without me being here, but I could not miss the opportunity to talk to you and talk to someone that says he's over there in a box of rocks. I thought that was awesome.
I'm honest, if nothing else, yeah.
I love it. It's an experience, to be honest with you, we can't beat it. So, um, the biggest thing we want to say is thanks. You know, we know that full-day K is an investment, and it costs money, and it takes time, and it is something that you all did not have to venture into, and, and you did, and we really appreciate that, and we just, you know, genuinely thank you for the opportunity to have our kiddos with us all day long, and just look forward to seeing what we can do to continue to see that program grow. But most importantly, just thank you. You know, thanks for your confidence, thanks for your faith, and thanks for helping us make this happen. So it's kind of just a quick look of where we are. We currently have three full-day classes. What we would like to do is see that jump up to five. We currently serve 72 kiddos. If we go up to five full-day classes, that would get us up to, you can see up there, 120 kiddos. That'd be a significant jump. This year, we had about 60 kids on our waiting list. We had 10 or 12 families that just withdrew and went somewhere else. Those are types of families we probably don't want to lose. If they have the means and the resources to be withdrawing and going to other places, those are folks we want to be able to provide these opportunities for right here and keep them within our schools. We currently have 10 half-day classes. We would drop that down to eight right now, so that would still be a total of 13 kindergarten sections. And obviously, that's based on enrollment and the number of kids that come to us, but looking at the last few years, that's what we, uh, we foresee happening, and that would be an increase of one kindergarten teacher. So we'd go from eight teachers to nine teachers in order to have two full-day sections.
Just for context, Luan sent out an email on Friday. We have 129 students registered for the full-day lottery as of Friday, and 95 students or parents preferring the half-day program. Just random Friday in February.
Yeah, and that's great contextual information, because it's something our families need. It's something our families request. Every time I talk to somebody, that's almost the first question I get. When we tour, get tours of the building, she gets this question all the time too. "You guys have full-day K, how do I get into full-day K?" So it's something we know the community is looking for and asking about, and we're just looking for the opportunity to provide that to them.
We have several ways that we measure student progress. One tool that we use is A I S T, that specifically speaks at early literacy skills. And at the end of kindergarten last year in the spring, we saw a significant increase in the flow of our full-day students and their cognitive skills compared to our half-day students. Math is another tool that we use in muffling that covers grade transfer data and computer data, that looks at reading and math skills. So this fall, we looked at our first graders and compared the scores of those who participated in our full-day with our program and our half-day with our program, and did see if we can both immediate math scores of our students who were in the first grade. And next, we're going to take a look at half, specifically about first grade reading intervention data, and when you look across L P S first graders and L E C C first graders, there's a reduction in the amount of students that require intervention in the meeting in first grade. But this coming out of full day, less of them needed extra help when it came to back-to-back reading skills in first. That's significant information, I think, because the full day provides an opportunity for students to practice more, practice reading more, practice math more, practice socializing more, practice resolving conflicts more, and it allows our teachers to really go down and provide that reinforcement in that full-day.
You know, for me, when I saw that data as compared to, I mean, it's great to, it makes sense, sort of makes sense that if students are there, of course their aims of scores will be higher, or of course their scores will be higher, they're spending more time. To me, the fact that they retained those skills over the summer, and then were able to require, you know, less intervention, allowing teachers to intervene with other students, that they retained that. To me, that was a much more impactful piece of data than, to me, which would be a bit obvious, that, oh, if students spent more time with me, then they would learn more. So I loved that that was a piece that you looked at, to how did they retain that over the course of the next year.
Which we, you know, tend to look at, the fact that it is a cross coming, whether it's both at L P S and at L E C C.
Yeah. It was the first, that's first grade data from both buildings. So five, you know, we have five first grades at L E C C, and then the rest of them are L P S, so that was overall.
Yeah.
So I want to talk a little bit about community need and interest in our full-day kindergarten program. Last year, because we only had the three sections, we had about 60 students placed on the full-day waiting list, and as Jesse mentioned earlier, we had 11 families withdraw from muffling because they didn't get into full-day K. So we'd really love to have more sections to be able to offer them. As you can tell from the numbers that Dr. Kraus read, we already have enough students in whole, with the full-day lottery, to build five sections with a waiting list already getting started. So the kids are definitely there. And as Jesse also commented, one of the things I do in the building is get tours and meet with prospective kindergarten parents. And the number one question I get from pretty much everybody I meet with is, "Tell me about your full-day kindergarten program. How do I get in? Is it automatic?" And the parents are particularly, particularly, we've been, we're living here, and the lottery already passed, and it can't automatically be pulled into a full-day program. So increasing this would definitely fulfill a community interest that we have here. Earlier this year, we gave a survey to all of our muffling first grade teachers, both at L E C C and L P S, and asked them to note any differences they saw in half-day incoming first graders versus full-day incoming first graders. And in all of the areas we surveyed, there was a moderate or significant difference between the full and half-day students, and behaviors particularly related to school success. A couple of quotes that teachers wrote on their survey, from what first I talked a little bit about, just noticing an overall readiness and a social awareness with, that kind of set them apart from their half-day peers and full-day students. And then a big difference in half-day to full-day, particularly in the areas of school readiness, the ability to transition, and just their stamina for the day. They were ready to go to school all day. And that I personally had a kind of a unique perspective on this. I was a first grade teacher in the district before I stepped into this fall, and so I taught a lot of half-day kindergartners who came to me from half-day, and they were ready for first grade. But I was also lucky enough to win the lottery two years ago, and my own child got into the muffling full-day program. And I was extremely pleased with the additional growth that we were able to show in that time, and I had my own reference point of what incoming first graders looked like coming from half-day, and I was able to observe what my own child was able to do. So I'm definitely a very big fan of this program, and what the community who started it has created, and I'm very excited to be a part of.
So one of the questions we get asked a lot about is space. Space is an issue, space is always an issue. So we looked at what we could do with that, how could we creatively come up with another classroom without adding trailers or anything along those lines? So what we were going to do, or what we were planning to, is combine intervention specialist rooms. So right now, our intervention specialists have their own classrooms, their regular-sized classrooms. We will have two of them share one of those spaces, and when we create their schedule, we will just make sure that their inclusion time and their pull-out time is happening at different times. So if I'm pulling kids out to work with me, the other intervention specialist could be pushing into a classroom, and we can kind of flip-flop their schedules around and make sure we can make that happen. So they're sharing a space, but for the most part, they will not necessarily be there at the same time. Obviously, there will be overlap, and they will share the space, but what we will try to do is create a schedule that allows them to have their own space within a shared space setting, then free an empty classroom that we would need for the additional full day. And this is just for, for you guys to look on at some point, not necessarily now or tonight, but for some leisurely reading. And the biggest thing, like I said, just thank you. You know, I said it last time, I met with you guys, it seems like it was a while, it was only a couple months ago, but thank you for letting me be part of your team and letting me be part of Tiger Nation, and thank you for all the opportunities you provide for our teachers and our staff, and for our students and our families, and it's a fantastic place, and a lot of that is because of the leadership you all provide, so we just genuinely thank you for that. And then, any questions that you may have about, I know we went through that really quickly and summarized it really fast, but any questions you have for me or the team, we'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
Do I have questions?
Jesse, how many students are served by the intervention specialists so that, you know, that you're combining the rooms in terms of-
Yeah, so that, right now, their caseloads vary from about 12 to 15, but they very rarely see that many kids at a time. They typically are serving two to three to four kids at a time, based on their individual needs, or they're pushing into a classroom and serving six or seven of them within the classroom setting.
You also have some other support staff that work with kids. Besides being intervention specialists, you have a reading specialist?
Yeah, so we have a couple, we have a reading specialist, and then we also try to utilize our classroom assistants, repair professionals, to make sure they're helping kiddos as needed.
Music teachers, I happened to be over there the other day, and music teacher was-
Progress monitoring for us. So it's an all-hands-on-deck. We understand that we, while I say our goal is for the kiddos to have fun and love school, that is our goal, but at the same time, we have some certain foundations we need them to learn. We need them to be able to identify their math concepts and phonics and reading and stuff, so anyone that is available that has time in their day, they are at some point going to be putting their hands on our kiddos and making sure they are grown.
I just wanted to say that this has really nothing to do with full-day kindergarten, but I had the opportunity to be in your building a couple of Mondays ago and see, I think, most of your kiddos. I know I handed out almost 400 stickers, so.
Wow.
And I, I was just simply impressed with the kids. I mentioned this in a, in a tweet that I put out, but that those children spoke of love and care and respect. They also used words, like some of the pictures I showed them, one of, one of the kids said, "Oh, that's a predator," and so they used some big vocabulary words. They were just, they were a joy to be with. And so I know that you guys are doing a great job with them there, and I had a whole lot of fun with them, so.
And Craig, just to piggyback on what Dr. Loren said, I mean, I, I really enjoy the message that's coming out of L E C C this year, the, you know, the tweets and things like that. It's from the beginning of the year where I think there were a lot of phone calls being made, and, you know, even just letting people know, "Hey, little Johnny's fine and having a great day," and all that good stuff, and then the tweets. So, you know, some of the things Dr. Loren's mentioned, you know, that's coming from you guys, obviously, so, thank you for that. You did ask, the first question on my mouth was space, you know, because I was like, my understanding was, there's no space there. Oh, and just, just, we don't have trailers, we have educational cottages? Okay, just so we're clear on that, so.
We have a dubbed-defined fine arts center at our building.
Define arts center, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, space is an issue, but we feel like we can be creative and make that work.
Well, I think it's fantastic, I think it's fantastic, we're going to have two more classes, and definitely appreciate the work you put in to find that space for two more classes, yeah, that's a big deal. So, and you're exactly right, that we don't want people going other places, so let's keep them here, so, thank you.
So, Mr. Coles, it is Mrs. Pettit's birthday, so if there was a need for a birthday selfie...
I was here yesterday, so we got one.
Saying, "Oh." Mr. Carver's brought up the tweets, like, the birthday selfie might need to happen with the board.
Yeah, I will definitely come over and grab that, and I'll figure it out. While I'm doing that, any other questions for the team? They really did all the work.
Oh, man. I want to say something about this team. So, you know, we, yes, you know, yes, our high school teachers, you know, Mrs. Chastain, Mrs. Partridge are, you know, spending their time to work with those kids. I, it so happens that my daughter's soccer team does skills training at the L E C C on Monday nights, and so I use it to walk laps, and I'm never there alone. Like, so I understand that the clubs and the high school teachers do those things with kids, but our, but even the teachers of our youngest teachers are there at 6:30 at night, I yell at them and tell them to go home, and they are like, "Okay," but every time I, because it's not a big school. It's a lot of laps, so I walk by their room a lot. But just the, the amount of time and effort that teachers are putting in, and while I understand being there full-time benefits the kids, that does not just happen because they're there full-time. That happens because they're with our teaching staff, that happens because of the team that works together to make sure that our students' needs are met, that happens because of this whole group together, not just because they're there for an extra two and a half hours a day.
I just got to say, it's great to see Mrs. Rush. My, my, my son had her, and it's fantastic to see that you're still there.
Twenty-one.
He's twenty-one and now a police officer, so.
Got a real job.
Right. All right, everybody good? All right, thank you again, very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you. And because that's not enough great things that are going on in the district, we also have Business Advisory Council here tonight. So I think Lynette Biax is going to start us off. And we have to hustle, because there's a girls' basketball playoff game.
Uh-oh. Wait, 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 yeah, we need her sister.
There's a Superman, too.
Yeah.
No, I know. We wouldn't have understood anyway.
This morning driving in.
Thank you, L E C C.
So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Kraus and Andrea for asking me to be on this council, because I think it is, I think it's wonderful, so, thank you both for that. So, okay. So the Business Advisory Council, to begin with, it is a mandate from the Ohio Department of Education. I'm in the business side, so it is competitive. From the Ohio Department of Education, that every school district has a advisory council. However, our council would like it to be more than just a mandate, we're trying to make it more of a, a working council that brings things to action. The mandate is that it meets quarterly, and that we also report to the Board of Education by March 1st of each year. And when we do report, we are to bring you what the committee has done and what the committee will be doing in the future. So, as I mentioned, the idea is that it's more of just, not just a reporting committee, but an action committee, so the mission statement is quite lengthy, so this is an abbreviated version of the mission statement, the actual document is on the website. So the local school district's business advisory council pledges to address the following goals: the delineation of employment skills and development of curriculum to instill these skills, the changes in the economy and job market and types of employment in which future jobs are most likely to be available, the development of a working relationship among businesses, so in essence, it all is to be more of an action committee, not just a reporting committee. And we're also structured to be able to appoint subcommittees, like we had a subcommittee to put together this presentation tonight, so that tasks are done, and not just having meetings. The number that was decided upon for the committee was to have no more than seven business members, again, the qualifications are there, and that's also on the website, so you can add to the future. The committees are here listed, we have a nice variety of people from the business community and from our district. So for the accomplishments that we've had this year in our four meetings, we've actually done quite a bit in the meetings that we've had, first was to establish the core members of the council, again, we look at this as more of a group, inviting in guest speakers from the community, also, at the time that we do have guests, that we feel there are other people from the district that would benefit from hearing them, we've also invited in other people to listen to those guest speakers, other district employees, et cetera. We've created the webpage for you to look at, it has the bylaws, the constitution, and the minutes from each of the meetings, along with all of the members and their information. We've scheduled six meetings, although it's only required to have four per year, we have gone above that and done six meetings for the year, and we've completed four to this date, and as I mentioned, we've also had two guest speakers this year. Our first guest speaker was a parent from the district, and I had met him a couple of years ago, because he had his daughter in class, and at the time, he was getting ready to take a sabbatical to do some pretty interesting research, I felt, so he was kind enough to come and present the research that he did. This is Dr. Don Gilco, and he is an associate professor from the Leonard School of Business, and just some of the highlights that we found from his, what he presented that evening, he spent a lot of time with us, and afterwards also, was kind enough to continue to send us information and contacts for us to use for future. So, some of the key things were that students need quantitative skills, no matter what their major is. Math is very important, no matter what career, no matter what major. Also, what they found from the research is that experiential learning was the best predictor of job offers, whether the students got the job offer and the salary that they got, and they found that experiential learning was either co-op, internship, study abroad, or participation in research. Also, he mentioned that it was better to stay focused and go in depth than whether to just scatter out, share with the school. Some of the things he thought would be maybe important for our curriculum were to be very project oriented, work on communication skills with the students, a lot of collaboration, conflict resolution, critical thinking, problem skills, problem solving skills, instill driving curiosity in our students, passion in our teachers, which I think we've seen a lot of that tonight, and also to try to involve parents in this new mindset. Sometimes, you know, parents think a lot about this, what's the curriculum, what are you doing in the class, what are the, what is the paper pencil kind of work, but kind of thinking about education in a different way. And then, kind of switching gears, our next speaker came from the skilled trades, and we had Bill Frayley and Mike Fray from the local 392 plumbers, pipe bitters, and mechanical service, to talk to us about what the skilled trades are going to be doing today. And one of the first things they talked about is the shortage of skilled workers, and there's the energy workforce and not enough applicants coming in, and said, you know, what can we do as a school district, and some of the things that they talked about were expand some of our programs, like Project Lead Away, communicate with parents to change the mindset of, you know, what does a student look like that would go into the skilled trade? Sometimes I think, what do we, how do we move to college, and, you know, how do we change that mindset? Also, the typical person that is in the skilled trade right now is a white male, and to be able to increase the outreach to a diverse population, females, underprivileged populations, all types of minority, not just have white males going into the skilled trade, that was something they really talked about. They did a little overview of just what does it look like, the apprenticeship program that they offer, the five-year program, while they're in the five-year program, they, they will have pension, healthcare, wages, schooling, free schooling, free schooling, which that's paid for college, combined, finished. Their first year apprentices will earn about $13 an hour plus benefits while they're going to school. At the end of the, their schooling, which is beyond apprenticeship, there's more schooling beyond that, which I think is a good idea, so that would be around $60,000 a year for their career at that point. Also, we talked about, we asked what makes a good candidate, and they said, you know, someone who's reliable, good attendance, a team player, good math skills, good work ethic, communication skills, critical thinking, problem solving. And as I was putting this presentation together, I was like, hmm, these were like the exact same things we heard from the Bradwood School of Business, the exact same skills. So I thought that was really interesting, and we talked about this with the committee, it's like, these are the skills our kids need, no matter where they're going, so I thought that was really interesting. The other thing that they talked about was change the mindset of parents and educators, so there's a lot more similarities than differences, which I thought was extremely interesting.
And now, we didn't plan it, but we were convinced with the science program was...
Same thing, the things that they're finding, exactly, yeah. As far as future work, some of the things that we're hoping to do, looking at the economy and the job market, the committee would like to collaborate with both, we have a working relationship with Claret County Chamber and the Little Miami River Chamber Alliance, to study the trends in the local economy and explore the community and regions in demand careers, and what are those careers, and use that information to look at our curriculums, look at our programs, and align those throughout the district. Also, to organize a roundtable with businesses and other key stakeholders, focusing on the economic trends, employability skills, and look at what students will need in the future. And what kind of programs can we have, how to communicate these things to our students and to our parents? Some of the things we have been doing, and some of the things we'd like to expand upon, at the high school, Drew Mitchell, who is here, also from the economic committee, is one of our guidance counselors, has been organizing some fantastic luncheon learns, which we will continue, we have career fairs, and we'd like to continue those, utilizing Navi on tour, we have several mentoring opportunities, speed mentoring, high school ambassadors coming down to the lower grades, one-to-one mentoring programs through, again, the Claret County programs. Also, looking to explore possibilities with the high school schedule changing next year, and looking at our whole master planning process, and looking at space, time, availability, and how can we work all of this in. So Drew is going to kind of look at this education, career education model that they've been working on, trying to look at whether to use it throughout the entire, where you go.
It's been exciting, we've been able to glean information from the area business leaders, and then incorporate that into our plans, and wherever, I thought it might be on this computer, it's not, we just got the access to it on that. Okay, all right. So David will help me.
This helps us to then connect this with students, because as Lynette mentioned, this is an action, we simply do not want this to stay with us, we want this to have an impact for students. And as you take a look at the current system, that we're able to utilize because of a move to utilizing Navi from grade six through 12, this was a nine through 12 system, it's developed over the course of several years now, but now specifically, we're helping students in the middle grades to become aware of opportunities, to take some information, we gave them business leaders certainly helped with that, never offering any sort of information that there's an expectation that someone will know what they're going to do the rest of their lives, no matter if it's middle school, high school, it doesn't matter, we want them to understand, we are hoping that they'll greater understand what opportunities are like, and then have meaningful tools for research. These continue, grades six all the way through, with a variety of assessments, resume development, specific tools for the research that might be necessary for an apprenticeship, a credential program, a two-year program, a four-year program, and all of this, again, is how it's being applied on my primary planning system. So this has been a feature, I'm assuming for us, certainly, is we've been able to then give students a greater grasp of what is available, and we'll also decide about what's in store. Right now, we feel like students are getting a bit of information about themselves, their strengths and their personalities, their interests, and next year, we're really hoping to move forward and help these students utilize the tools that they have in even more effective ways, whether it be increased career shadow opportunities, internship experiences, again, greater utilization of our resources.
Okay, so can you...
Drew, how are we encouraging our students to use this tool? Because, you know, I have a student who I know does not dabble in it, so, you know, is that, is that something that is, let's say, a resource and time issue as well, as to, you know, or just education, you know, how can we, because they're great tools and they're great programs you guys are putting together, and, you know, we want everyone to use them, but what can we do to get more adoption by the students to use it?
Agreed, totally. So currently, I'll just do it in English classes, once a year, ninth through 12, offer the career assessment to use, so they're including their initial starting point. Our two-year vision is actually to then utilize an adjusted staple at the high school in a day, whether you utilize a screen cast or a specific classroom, where a student could be kind of home in, you know, that's a good idea, if you're going to follow this screen cast, and then utilize the tools that you just learned about through the assessment itself, that'd be great, it's nine, 10, 11. The hope in the five-year plan would then be building to even pre-attachment type of projects that are housed, certainly in terms of the research tools in Navi.
I hope you can be stable, we'll have times where we have times to kids that we have to have, you know, have. What's the word we're using?
Advisory.
Advisory periods, something along those lines, where we can utilize this time to do things of this nature, those have to have, and that's.
Give them 10 points of extra credit, and we'll all do it.
You'd probably do it for three.
Yeah, you said that the one, the one nice thing that seems to come out in almost every presentation, and a lot of the meetings, whether, whatever committee it is, seems to be, the message seems to be very, very consistent, you know, the what are we looking for, what are, you know, all those things, that message has become, it might, for me, crystal clear, you know, it's clear what we're, what we're trying to get and what things we're looking for. My only question, and this might be a bit of a stupid question, but, so we're working on building Tiger Nation, so what's the, what's the hard connect between what you guys are doing with the business advisory committee and what we're trying to do with building Tiger Nation? I mean, you know, clearly, I mean, I've sat in the meetings, the information is amazing, how is that information getting transferred over to building Tiger Nation, so when we're making all these decisions, it's part of it?
I can take one of the facilities, and specifically, and run through, like, well, you've had the opportunity to visit, there's some institutions that have some, have their options, and they're utilizing very dedicated or career resources. So like, currently, our luncheon lunch takes place in a math classroom, we're very thankful that Katie Ruck is going to class, because I mean, we're just going to teach some kids when they get out of there in a hurry. The hope would be that we would be able to utilize this space eventually for that specific purpose as well, and invite in guests to talk about that stuff, that, or maybe if they still create representation in the day. So there would be an opportunity, potential to then to also use that space with students to enhance their around their, from the, from the integration in terms of curriculum as well. Our focus would adopt more of the modern, the, the, the instructions from in-class team, and there's some maybe new sample search, but we're finding the teachers that burn the most, the information, it's helping them.
It's very interesting that the conversations that are taking place out in the community about post-graduation, where are kids going, you know, what are their options and things like that, I mean, you know, we even talked a little bit about, about a little bit of a negative stigma to going into a trade, or going into a junior college or something like that, those, it's amazing to me in the last couple of years how much those conversations have changed.
The kids that aren't, like, they're actually, you know, they're not, they don't want to go to college, or they don't feel that they need to be out of high school, where does it slide in, where is that particular calling, that's really on the train?
The sixth year, yeah. So one of the things that our freshmen here, currently this year, and we hope next year, this will be an assistant message from fifth through 12, we want everyone to see that they've utilized path, so we remind students, there's an expectation, there's, you like the tools, and they can say that this is the advantage, you know, what they're strong, what they hope to see, in terms of that first job, realizing the amount of time that multiple jobs. So the message we're trying to send the right way is, we will support you on a new program, basically, school counselors, no matter what you're doing, please don't make this short, it's on, we're determined, you know, for, for, giving some opportunities to them, we certainly want that, we want to make sure that the student, because I've seen them look at where they're wired up to success, and then move in that direction. And if you don't take a sort of gap year, two score, or whatever, we want them to make this important. And Drew, can you move on?
Any else?
I have more of a, I have more of a general business advisory question, and that is, forgive me if I missed it in the presentation, what is the expectation of when your business council will report to the board, such as you're doing to now, do you have a, tonight, do you have a plan to report to the board annually, report to the board semi-annually, what's the, do you know what I mean?
The requirement is, is just annually, correct?
Okay, that's, I just want it to be, thanks.
Doesn't mean we can't.
No, I just...
Doesn't mean they can't make a guest appearance.
Thanks, yeah.
Call Mr. Blumberg in front of the court.
Well, boss, you're up.
You know you miss, you know you miss us. All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it. All right, moving on to committee updates, if I'm not missing anything, I believe we had a full slate of committee meetings in the past month, so...
Not policy.
Not policy, okay.
Policy didn't meet, but we're meeting next week, but there is a policy resolution on the agenda. You'll be happy to note, or at least I'm happy to note, that there's one policy to adopt, and there are five to rescind, so we're going in the right direction of, you know, having the, the right amount, right sizing our policy manual.
Three cheers for policy committee. All right, thank you. How about facilities committee?
We had a meeting, and thank goodness, there was a show fest a couple of weekends ago, because during, while show fest was going on, it was discovered a huge leak in the wrestling room, and the wrestling mats were soaked, not to mention, and there's light. So people were there to make it, clean it up, and make it not quite as bad, but at any rate, and then there was a sprinkler leak, and that's been identified and will be repaired over the summer. All the reflective window covering is now complete here at L I S, I don't know if you noticed, walking into here, it's, you can't see it anymore.
See yourself.
I thought, I thought the meeting had been canceled.
I know, I thought, oh, it's still dark in there, but no. And over the summer also, they will be relocating the darkroom in the digital arts program, it's just growing, and they need more space, so they will be moving it across the hallway. And then, as always, lots of new technology, ongoing, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. How about finance committee?
Finance committee did meet, McKevan presented kind of the overview of where we are in terms of budget, revenue expenditures, we are, to be, to summarize it, we are on target with where we should be, nothing, nothing out or of concern. We talked about House Bill 343, which I knew nothing of prior to that meeting, which apparently died in the lame duck session, but it, it dealt with what reassessments, local governments contesting reassessments of property values.
But that did die.
So that did die, so all of those things proceed. So all of those things proceed as they are now. And then we talked a bit about the CRA update on a good, a good note. All the properties that were grandfathered in have filed their applications with us correctly, so all paperwork is in order. There's been one new CRA with the city for Oasis Turf's new facility. We talked about that and that Kevin will serve on the Turk. Remind me, the acronym is Tax Incentive Rebuke Council. With the, with the city and I think there's some things with, with that first CRA that we wanted to clarify the wording. So we're sure going forward that all of them are worded appropriately as we all think. And then talked about the state audit for next year, which we get to have the state auditors themselves as opposed to an external body. And Kevin is very excited about that.
We've become best friends. They stay around for so long.
Sounds like a good audit.
Those are the big issues, everything.
That's great, that's right.
I'm sure we'll be fine. You guys are rocking, rolling down there in the treasures department, so.
It's more a matter of time. The state auditors spend, or tend to spend a little bit more time here. Okay.
All good? All right, thank you. How about Student Experience Committee?
Yeah, we met and we actually discussed a lot of great stuff. First, we discussed the need for student tutoring at the high school. And we were told with the new bell schedule coming that Peggy had a few things in the works and that the student advisory bell would be used wisely. And they were looking at a lot of different options at this point, as far as what that will look like and how it will work. We also discussed the need for consistency of online management systems for students and parents. And that's something that we're going to continue discussing. We received an update on the research that's being done in regard to the LHS College Career Counselor Pilot. And they should be coming in front of the board next month or the following month with more information and some proposals in regard to that. Mr. Doyle went through the special ed profile, which is similar to the state report card, but addresses our special ed population, and I thought that was very informative and insightful and helpful. And lastly, we got to give our input on the draft of Portrait of a Tiger. And it fits with our vision perfectly and it looks awesome. So I think everybody will be really excited to see that.
Thank you. And did you want to talk a little bit about Tiger Nation or?
We will have another steering committee this week. We have a finance committee on Thursday night. And Christine and I briefly spoke today and will be getting dates for focus groups, very likely the week of March 11th and the week of March 18th.
Thank you. All right, so discussion, State of the Schools?
Speaking of the week of March 18th, State of the Schools was canceled due to bad weather. And so we, it took a minute to find a new date because obviously, we have lots of things going on. But it takes a minute to get a lot of moving parts together. So we will be scheduling that for March 20th from 6:00 to 7:30. And that will be at the high school. We have many of the same people involved, but we have some that had to bow out due to conflicts and some new people that are able to come on board because they don't have a conflict anymore. So that'll be, continue to be a great event, so we hope everyone can join us on the 20th.
You said high school?
At the high school.
What, beginning time?
Six o'clock till 7:30.
All right, thank you.
Other discussion topic is, at the last business meeting, I asked for the board's permission to submit the board's work for a recognition from OSBA for their bronze, silver, and gold awards. Thanks for your input and your support on that. I was able to submit that and the board was recognized as a gold level Board of Education by the OSBA. So well-deserved and proud that we were able to put that together and get that recognition. There is an award ceremony at the, it's at Lebanon, what is it? Warren County, Warren County Careers Center in Lebanon. It's on March 12th. It starts at 5:00. I did attach the agenda that night. It's in board docs. If you're available and are interested in going that night, please let me know and we'll make sure that you get registered. Congratulations. Thanks for being an awesome board.
And they put us at the very end.
You didn't tell them the truth, did you?
You read it. I was willing to back up everything I wrote, so. I was excited to be able to put that forward. So yes, it is at the very end of the agenda. You're correct, Michelle. So just let me know, either, you know, tonight or whenever, and we'll make sure that everyone gets, you get registered if you'd like to go that evening.
All right, thank you. Student Representative Report. Caroline, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic, thanks for asking.
Sophia's six, so I luckily get to do all of them tonight.
Probably because she's doing too much.
Trying to be as quick as possible. Oh, it's okay.
All eyes are on you, Caroline.
Yay. So to start with LACC, they're continuing to work on their growth, innovation, and care goals. And then, as Mr. Jarvis touched on, Mr. Coles has currently called to 150 families to celebrate their children's success, and he's going to continue to do that. And then the preschool team is in the process of reviewing applications for next year. And then classroom assistants will be focusing on learning proper language and appropriate, appropriate ways to use deep-pressure tools for calming students down in the classroom. And they participated in a food drive for life food pantry in Nest. And I actually helped transport the food and they brought in the most out of any other school, so that's exciting. And then two fun upcoming things that is going on, are going on there is on March 1st, they have their full-day kindergarten lottery. And then March 11th is their terrific tiger celebration. So then, at the primary school, they just finished MAP testing. And they're also continuing to work on the growth, innovation, and care goals. Every Thursday morning, they're devoted to working with different subject area leaders on rotating bases and also using early release days to create planners, assessments, and guides for their students. And then they have a lot of celebrations going on, so Fit is Fun is happening, Random Acts of Kindness Week. They also just had the National Children's Theater come in to learn about conserving energy. And then also, they enjoyed Valentine's Day celebrations with visits from Dr. Lorenz as the Valentine's Lady. So that was exciting. And they have, on March 4th and through the 6th, they have an open house art show and music performance showcase going on at their school. And then, so the elementary school, their staff has had the opportunity to attend a lot of different conferences. So some of them are, six teachers went to the National Reading Recovery Conference in Columbus. Ms. Foran is participating in a High Ames Regional Principal Cohort, which is being held at Scarlet Oaks. And then, some of them are, have the opportunity to attend the International Council for Exceptional Children in Indianapolis. And they also, some of them have the opportunity to go to Understanding Poverty Workshops in Dublin, Ohio. So those are like a lot of different things that their teachers are getting involved in and like growing. And something really exciting that they just have found out through their testing is their watch list for third-grade reading. So it went down to four students, which is really exciting because it, at the beginning of the year, they had over 150 students on the list. So that was a really big accomplishment.
Just to clarify, the watch list is kids that they are concerned about not meeting the requirements for the third-grade reading guarantee. So those are students that have met the mark in, through MAP and have gotten the support over the year to make sure that they can be promoted to the fourth grade.
And then they're, right now, doing a compassion project, collecting pop tabs for Ronald McDonald House. And then at the intermediate school, Ryan, I don't know how to say his last name, it's Werny. Okay. He completed the American Lung Association climb. And him and his family raised over $1,600 for the association, which they were all really proud of. And their student council and care club just hosted the annual dodgeball tournament. And they had 350 participants and they raised about $1,500 for Ronald McDonald House. And then at the middle school, their winter sports season just wrapped up. So eighth grade girls won the ECC and seventh grade girls finished second in the ECC. I don't know what sport that's for, but.
Basketball.
Okay, basketball. Wrestling finished second in the ECC with a lot of weight clash champions. And then boys' basketball finished competitively in the league and in their tournament. Their music concerts will be starting soon. So LMS has a strings concert on the 19th of February at 7:00. Right now.
My son's playing. I'm here.
And then the eighth grade band has one on March 5th at 7:00 as well. And seventh grade band has one on March 7th. And then at the high school, scheduling for next year is in full swing right now. Something really exciting is that Erin Albert and Riley Bollock are divers and they qualified for state and they'll be competing next week in Canton, Ohio. And then this past Saturday was a really busy day. There was the jazz band, jazz band swing dance, which happened at the high school. And then ECC Wrestling Championships also was held. And tournament play for basketball began on Saturday. And then robotics team is currently preparing for the Ohio State Championship, which is in two weeks.
No, it's this Saturday.
Which is this Saturday. So that's all going on at the high school. That's all that is going on at all of the schools.
Wow, lots of good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one comment, LEED, Loveland Alcohol, I can't remember what the acronym stands for, sorry.
Loveland Education Against Alcohol and Drugs, right?
Thank you, yes. Too many acronyms. They held their first tailgate get-together before a basketball game and it was very well-attended. And so they still have some pretty great things going on and that stuff coming, yeah, was it, good. Good deal.
I forgot to put my bracelet on, Snai. Did they do give away all the bracelets?
Oh, yeah, they, yeah, they needed more, I guess. So that's a good thing. All right, thanks. Thanks, Caroline.
Well done.
Exceptional, exceptional. All right, let's see, so we're going to move into some resolutions here. We have superintendent resolutions. First one is 7.1 to approve policies. So need a motion, please?
No move.
Lorenz?
Second.
Okay, this is Washburn. There you go. This is Washburn, all right.
Since Dr. Lorenz mentions, the Facilities Committee is doing a full audit of our 7,000 and 7,100. Dr. Lorenz and the committee, but mainly Dr. Lorenz, did a lot of work and did a lot of research and crafted 7,100 that sort of encapsulates many of the other ones that were a bit redundant and were not present in other school districts. So we sort of simplified that. So you saw that last month as a first reading. So 7,100 is there for approval with the next one being to rescind some of the redundant policies that were underneath that.
Okay, any questions? All right, Mr. Hawley?
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes. More importantly, 7.2 to rescind the policies. Need a motion, please?
May I move?
Mr. Portune? Any discussion?
7,100 encapsulates conversation or expectations for the board around facilities planning, looking at enrollment projections annually, organization of facilities for instruction, constructing facilities, which is currently a hot topic and something we're all working on, and looking at educational specifications for construction and making sure that we're utilizing the latest research, making sure that we're environmentally sound, utilizing space and data around that planning. That's all encapsulated in the new 7,100, so these can be rescinded.
Great.
See how exciting policy is? It's almost as exciting as finance, I think. More so. Mr. Portune says more so.
That's a bold statement, but we'll let you make it. All right, Mr. Hawley?
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes. Resolution 7.3 to approve the Citizens Climate Resolution. Need a motion, please?
No move.
Lorenz? Need a second? Then, Mr. Portune? Okay, discussion?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Dr. McClanahan for, the, the one Dr. McClanahan for bringing this notion to us that I believe it, it makes us, just makes a statement about what we try to do with and for our students. And I think it's a statement that is worth making.
Any else? Sure. I, I agree in, you know, in principle that with the symbolic, I think, resolution adoption, there are some things in terms of taking specific actions that I'm unsure about as written. And I don't know if, you know, is this something better to discuss more in depth before we move forward with the resolution as written? I think that, you know, a couple of, for example, which could be limiting items like saying that we will as opposed to we encourage, you know, purchasing of energy. It may tie us or there are things with a few of the pieces of wording that we might want to look at.
I had, I think we had had it provided with time to look at it for just those kinds of questions. And there was a change made to that particular statement that said we would, we will purchase energy from clean energy providers whenever possible. That was a change made to the resolution so that it does not create a situation where there is only one energy provider, for example, or if there are questions that we're taking time to research on clean energy providers. So that was something that I thought we were already doing, which was seeking to purchase energy and use energy in the cleanest and most efficient way and then putting in that when, whenever possible. Did not limit us, limit us or box us into anything.
I kind of agree with Ned, yes, you're right about that one piece. As a board, well, number one, I want to say thanks for bringing it to us, okay? It, it's, it is, it is important, I agree with that totally. And it's also important to our kids. Our kids have made it crystal clear that, how they feel about what we're doing with the environment and things like that. I think I, if I'm hearing Mr. Portune correctly, I kind of agree with him that I think this is worth doing, but I want to make sure we do it right. So, and we had, we did not have discussion really about it at the last work session. And I think it would warrant a little more time just to go through the resolution, make sure we have it worded the way that we as a school district want to have it worded and, and make sure we do it. I'll use the word correctly. Might not be the correct word, but I'll use the word correctly, so if. So I guess my, my comment would be, for me personally, I, I would like to, I guess the word, table it for tonight just so we can discuss it a little bit more, but to be able to bring it back at a, a future date and vote on it.
I was apparently under the, the wrong assumption that this, prior to tonight. I was apparently under the, the wrong assumption that this, prior to tonight, um, when we had the discussion, that, you know, this was a boil of plate that everyone was doing as opposed to it was locally constructed, that we.
I apologize for any miscommunication. I did provide it and, uh,
It was my misunderstanding, I'm sure.
Yeah. So would you suggest that we discuss it at the next work session? When would, in other words, I, I thought there was going to be discussion. So I'm, I'm just asking, I guess, when there would be discussion.
I guess it's just how it ends up either, our, our next work session is March fifth. Um, I, when is the NSBA going to look at it, if you don't mind me asking? It's in March, but, yeah. We just don't know this before or after the fifth. Okay. I mean, I, I would like to look at it at the earliest possible time, so if we could, if we could add it to the agenda for the meeting on the fifth, does that work for what we already have?
We're having our mid-year update from teaching and learning.
And Dr. McClanahan, are you, are you possibly available to attend on the fifth? Great, thank you. So I, so I, should I do this right? I'd like to make a motion to table this, um, until the work session on the fifth? Is that done correctly? Is that all right?
You need a second?
You need a second?
I need a second.
I will second.
Other comments or concerns?
My apologies if I have caused that delay by my misunderstanding.
Mr. Holly, please.
Uh, Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Table it till the, uh, March fifth work session.
Would you envision putting it on the March fifth work session as an agenda item for adoption then?
Possibly. I mean, I mean, it just depends on how far along we get and, you know, then we're gonna, if, if we end up making changes to the actual resolution.
I would be good with that personally. Yeah, I mean, I think we, we can talk through it then and be able to.
If it's anything then that would be, um, it has, it has certainly been public discussion and it certainly would be, uh, able to be, uh, voted on at a work session because it's not something that we've just presented then and has not had a chance to be seen publicly.
I, I wanna make clear, I'm in no way, shape or form, I'm trying to stick it onto the back burner or anything like that. I just think it warrants some more discussion. Is there, is there a time crunch?
No.
For, for, for this? Okay. All right.
Well, there's certainly a time crush for our environment, but, um, the resolution probably can wait till March fifth.
All righty. All right, thank you. Uh, resolution seven point four, uh, to recognize boys and girls indoor track and field team, uh, for the purposes of competing in state events. Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Pettit?
Second.
Washburn? Discussion?
The Ohio Athletic Association doesn't recognize indoor track. So in order for our kids to participate at state, we need to have the board formally recognize, which some, which simply certifies that they're a real team. It keeps people from sort of putting together a ringer team of kids that aren't actually on a team just to go and compete. But we do in fact have indoor track. We have runners, like we have runners' club in fifth grade. We have elementary runners. We have kids who love to run. So, uh, um, it just simply acknowledges that so that they have permission to participate at state.
By doing so, does that cause us to have to specifically like identify indoor track coaches and?
Uh, we are, we have indoor track coaches, don't we?
Specifically?
We just so happen to have our athletic director here.
Okay, so it just falls under that and it's not even, okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Holly, please?
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes. Thank you. All right, under treasurer resolutions, we have, uh, eight point one, which is the, uh, January twenty-second, uh, education, Board of Education minutes, the February fifth, uh, nineteen Board of Education minutes. The eight point three is to approve the financial reports, payment of invoices, board member expenses, et cetera. Um, eight point four is to approve the update to the bond fund portion of the tax budget. And eight point five to approve the amended official certificate of estimated resources. So, uh, need a motion, please? I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Portune and, um, Mrs. Pettit? All right.
Um, I mean, there's not a lot to go over, um, this particular month, but eight point three, I did not pull out any specific checks. I would say in many ways it was business as usual. So there wasn't anything exciting, um, looking at the checks, 'cause there typically is. Tongue in cheek. Um, so anyways, so, uh, nothing there specifically, the financial packet. So I talked about it at our meeting, uh, with the finance committee that everything's looking good right now. Uh, the only particular line item that we're just looking at, it's not really out of whack. It's just, um, benefits. It's just a little bit higher than what we had originally forecasted and estimated. So it's about one to two percent higher than we would expect at this point. So if you're seven months into the year, it should be fifty-eight point three three. If you would assume that cash comes out, uh, regularly every month. So it's just a little bit higher, but, uh, one percent I think is actually, uh, is, is, it's maybe a lot of money, but it's not necessarily bad to be off by one percent on a forecast. So, uh, that's the only line item that we're currently looking at, and keep our eye on, but nothing to specifically change on that. So, any questions on that? Just to, once again, discuss is eight point four. So we approved the tax budget back in January. And I apologize about this. I did not have the specific, or I didn't have all of the information as to what the bond mileage currently is in the district. And so I received that information and updated it accordingly. As you may, uh, be aware as well with the tax budget, it's something that we provide to the auditor of the county. So Hamilton County, even though we're in three districts, we provide it to Hamilton. And it's not necessarily, uh, something that they always go off of. It is just proving to them that we still need tax revenue, which we definitely do, still need it to function as a school district. So it's, um, it's just something that we basically put together, but we wanted to make sure that it was correct and it was right. So that's that portion of it. Uh, let's see, eight point five. So this was added on to, um, late on, I believe it would've been Thursday when we went live. Maybe Friday. Uh, either way, so I, again, kinda going back to August, I told you may, you may see this more often than you typically have in the past. So there were just some changes that we had to make. Um, if you look at my board report, these are not ca, these are cash accounts. So to kinda take a step back as to what that means, uh, the main portion of what we use in the district is our general fund. And so that's the money that comes in, uh, mainly from tax revenues and from the state. And most of what we do in the district is paid for out of the general fund. So when you look at these clubs, you know, obviously we had a couple of clubs here this evening. They come out of what's called a cash account. So, uh, if you're really into fund accounting and you wanna put out, pull out your USAS manual, which I'm sure, I see all you doing that at this moment, um, oh eighteen's, two hundred and three hundreds are athletics, student activity forms or student activities and some of those, uh, other accounts. So basically, when revenue comes in, it gets spent. Um, so if you see like a grant, if we receive a grant coming in, so specifically, one example is the just because grants. So we're receiving money in and then we're doling it out at the same time. So that just requires us to increase the expenses as revenue is increasing. So these accounts basically have revenue coming in and then they're spent accordingly as revenue comes in. So these aren't going into the red or anything like that. It's just to increase the expenses. And appropriations, uh, you have to approve increases in expenses. Any questions on those? Great.
Good?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Holly, please?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes. All right, resolutions pass. All right, and last but definitely not least, uh, human resources. Let me do a, do a motion. Do you need a motion to approve? Yeah, sorry about that.
I'll move.
Dr. Lorenz?
I'll second.
I'll second, if I didn't hear anybody else. So, sorry about that.
Yes, there's several additions. I have a, you know, I have two, I have a requirement of announcement by another, uh, junior age. The L E C C meeting, uh, which is, and, uh, recognition of, uh, you have an additional, um, recognition for substitutes under, uh, R A S. And, um, two additional supplemental courses, um, added to the, you know, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-fourth, under M N and, 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 you know, additional, two additional, uh, to add. Anything else?
Any questions or concerns? Do we have an introduction? After, oh, details. Mr. Holly, please?
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes.
Everyone, uh, please welcome Andy Cruz, our new football coach. Hello, everyone. I just wanna thank you guys for this tremendous opportunity. Uh, as you guys all know, Loveland is a special community. I could not be more excited to lead this young man in this one, in this board. But thank you. I definitely appreciate it.
You look, you look good in orange and black, by the way. All right, welcome to the team. All right, if nothing else, then I just needed a motion to adjourn. Appreciate everybody.
Oh, I move.
Did you? Like a standing move motion?
She should get that. It's her birthday.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes. All right, did I hear a second?
Oh, I was gonna say, no one wants to go home.
All right, Mr. Holly, please?
Mr. Portune?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jarvis?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Absolutely.
Out at seven forty-five.
My birthday.
Time for the super move.
It is, super moon, yes.
So is, is so. So we did.
You doing, uh, you doing something for your birthday or? Oh, since when do you listen to me?